Do we need a long? Yes, okay.
I'm calling. Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson. Dr. Kowalski.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Now let's get to the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, on the agenda, we have the equivalent of our minutes for this evening. Did I get a motion?
So please.
For it, like ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. Kowalski.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes. Um, next, um, Mr. Holbrook, I believe you've got on the agenda. Is it Dustin is going to give us an update on the Aubrey contract?
Yeah, yes, we've, we've talked about this, um, a number of times throughout the last year about working at possibly renegotiating a contract we have with Aubrey. Just to remind you, Aubrey was created by two former Henning City School District colleagues that ventured out on their own and many of the products that they use, um, the district is getting at low cost. And so what that looks like and, and what the proposal is and is the place that I, as a recommendation on the.
We want to present it and have discussions and there even tell them the story.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. I appreciate it. Members of the board, I'm going to show you this, uh, first slide, which is, well, I showed you before, but I wanted to give Dr. Kowalski a chance to get kind of caught up on how we got here. So like Mr. Holbrook said, Zach Vanderden and Chris Worsky were employees of the district and began developing this software that's now currently called Aubrey, um, when they were current employees of the district. Um, during that time in August of twenty seventeen, they entered into a copyright assignment with Aubrey. And as a part of that agreement, the district received, um, all of Aubrey functionality. Um, and I say all of it, it was all of the current functionality, but it limited a lot of the third-party applications. And unfortunately, the way the product has moved, it's moved to a significant amount of third-party, um, applications, which the district would not be eligible for. And so we received kind of the initial version, if you will, and then we also received this four percent, um, four percent royalty net sales once they reached five million dollars of the risk revenue as they defined risk revenue. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, Chris and Zach kind of leave the district at their new times for their new reasons, but ultimately to develop Aubrey. Fast forward to December of twenty twenty-two, uh, James Stocker, who's the current CEO of the district, and says, hey, I'd like to renegotiate this copyright agreement. It's kind of causing us issues. I'd like to talk to the district about this. So we met, had a discussion, and then between October, um, of twenty-three to December twenty-three, we basically went back and forth with both sets of legal counsel to kind of come to terms. So that's kind of what we left you the last time. So here's just briefly, the current agreement is we receive the current cancellations, but we don't get any of the third-party, uh, integrations. We received the four percent of net sales, um, I don't think we reached five million a year of revenue, which currently we don't believe they have reached that, but we believe that they are close. And then we also, the, the district transfers all existing investments as real-time ownership to Aubrey. So all the IP goes to Aubrey. Where did we end up? Because ultimately, we wanted all of the stuff and they wanted the royalties we don't. So where did we end up? So we started off by saying, hey, we want to get paid at least a little bit. And so we're going to receive a one-time, um, hundred and twenty thousand dollar accelerated, accelerated royalty payment plan to the district. That's payable thirty days following the execution of the agreement. We will also receive a twenty-four thousand dollar cancellation payment, just because there has to be some consideration given when you cancel, when you cancel the agreement. Um, we will receive perpetual license to all functionality, including all third-party tools at low cost. So there'll be a new contract for Aubrey, which they've sent over to us. Um, it'll actually be one of their actual, like their, their purchase of the receipt. And so we'll actually have a new agreement with them. Um, we will work with them to co-develop a big feature. At this point in time, I don't think it's going to happen during, uh, this new year, twenty twenty-four. I think this is an important push-off. In the twenty-four, twenty-five, I feel there's not going to have enough time in this school to sell this as a support. Um, what we can do is we agree with the copyright assignment and we associate with the, eliminating that, to be, um, another thing that we were really concerned about, uh, Mr. Wright and I were really hard on, what happens if Aubrey sells?
What?
That really makes us nervous. All right, we discussed this right by the way, so what we did was we broke into this new agreement, uh, we gave the termination penalty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if for any reason Aubrey or their successor or any sort of besides the term of our agreement, not give us this product for free, even though we have a perpetual agreement, then they would be settled to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Payable within sixty days of termination. I think that's the basics of it. Um, what questions can I answer for you?
What kind of big feature are we talking about, or are you at liberty to discuss that?
No, so that, that really hasn't been discussed. I'll be honest with you. I can tell you the two things that are top of my mind. Uh, one is surrounding MTSS and a risk dashboard, which you actually might hear a little bit about later today, um, which is ironic that this fell at this time. But, um, uh, I think there's a real need in our district for having our data or data as a service, um, that we can access in real time and, and allow our staff members to visualize in real time. I think there's a need for this, and I think that's something that we should be able to have access to, um, or that we can help them build out. Um, there's some other, there's some other pieces, some other tools, um, when it comes to parent and student communication that I think we could assist them with. Um, and again, the importance here is that we come alongside of them as a partner and we kind of, we reset this agreement. When, when it first started, we were kind of, we worked together as partners, and then we kind of drifted apart a little bit. And I think that's just the nature of the beast. Um, with changes here in the district and changes in Aubrey, we just kind of drifted apart. And I think this is an opportunity for us to, for us to kind of realign and come back together and say, you know what, the district wants to be a good partner with Aubrey. Aubrey wants to be a good partner with the district. Let's do this together. And this could be one of those features where, you know, myself and maybe Tricia, we could work, um, at, helping them kind of launch that and then maybe even help coach other districts as they begin to utilize that feature is to kind of why it's important, how it's important, how we are trying to set best practices in using that particular, uh, feature and tool.
Dustin, if you, remind me, um, they approached us initially on this because they, obviously the royalty was giving them some issues as far as growth and potential.
It's gonna, it's gonna hamper them when it comes to getting funding. At the end of the day, this is all about seeking additional funding to grow their business. And the royalty put giant handcuffs on them. And it's really in, obviously it's in their best interest to be able to get this funding, but I think ultimately it's in our best interest too, because if we're going to receive this product in perpetuity, then we want it to be the best product possible. The only way for it to be the best product possible is for them to continue to get funding in, in the, in this, in this ed tech space. It's very, very competitive. So the last thing you need is a five percent royalty holding them down. And my guess is they're going to go out for a series A round here pretty quickly, or they're, they're going to do that as soon as this, as soon as this ink is dry. If, if you guys, uh, agree to approve it, I think they're going to try to go out and get themselves, uh, some funding so they can expand their product.
It certainly seems to me that, that you have kept the interest of the school district in mind in this, and, and I appreciate that. And from, from where it was to where, what your presentation is today, it certainly looks like a, a pretty nicely negotiated deal for us.
I think it's fair. I think it's fair. If I didn't think it's fair, I wouldn't stand up here before you and say, I think this is a good idea. I do think it's fair. I think, you know, Mr. Wright and I were able to get a pretty good protection there with that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar cancellation, uh, early termination fee, which is really important to us because we don't want, you know, if, if you turn around and you buy Aubrey tomorrow and you're like, Hamilton, see you later, I at least wanted to, I at least want you to have to at least consider letting us go. And because we valued that, and just so you know, the, the way we came up with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the product was about, we're, we're valuing the product at about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year is what it would cost the district to go out and purchase the product. So that gives us two years, really us, I mean, Mr. Frazier. It gives us, Mr. Frazier, two years to figure out how we're going to pay for this. And so ultimately, we wanted to give him plenty of cushion, um, uh, to, to do so in the event that that would happen, again, hoping that it never does.
Right, right.
Just go ahead, Mike.
I thi- I think another thing to consider with this is the, the, the entire big feature piece. One of the things that we've asked our staffs and our administrators to do is to use data when making decisions. Right now, we're all over the place. I got to pull data from a hundred different places in order to do that. That takes time. That takes a lot of time. If we can take that and build a feature in which all data is housed in one location, and I've got that data right there, the amount of time that that's going to take, save for our staff to be able to do that's incredibly important. I think we've gotten to the point where we now understand the data, but it is excruciatingly time-consuming at times to pull all of that data because it's in a variety of different places. And that's going to be one of the initiatives. And, and I know Zach and Chris pretty well, and we had these discussions even when we initially, when they were working here for us, we've had those same discussions. So we're, we're looking to try to, to reconnect and re-collaborate with them in order to, every district wants that. It isn't just us. So that, so that, that's a win-win.
I think the other thing that, that, um, it was important about this is there was some risk for us with the initial agreement, that if they did sell, we lost everything. Um, and that's one thing that I think Dustin and I spent a number of hours making sure that we had the protection to continue to have the service and obviously be compensated for the work that was done here while it was being done on the district time and hours.
And, and just to give you a, a visual of kind of where, how Aubrey is kind of in alignment with, 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 what with Mr., let me try this again, with what Mr. Holbrook was just saying, is this is some of their data as a service dashboards that they already have available. Now, a lot of these, the reason these are not available to us currently is because we don't have that third-party agreement, and these flow through a third-party. So because of that, once we kind of hopefully get this taken care of, we can move into that. But just to give you kind of an idea, um, I'm just going to pop up a quick report here where like, for attendance in particular, they have, and it'll take a second for it to load because it's loading a bunch of data in the background, but there are these types of visualizations that will then be available to staff. But we can actually build some custom ones. And I think that's really the important piece to this, is once all this is in here, we can build a custom MTSS dashboard that meets the needs of our building leaders. We can build, um, a risk profile, which is on here as well. And again, it will take time for the data to load because we're, we're pulling in lots and lots and lots of data sources. So these aren't just instantaneous, uh, static, um, images. It, it takes some time for them to pull up. But once they're there, um, and again, this one, like I said, is not pulling up at the moment, which is never the, the best thing you want to show, but, um.
Mine's be a dial-up.
Yeah, it felt, it felt a little like that. Um, but here's, here's, this one came up real quick. So like, here's enrollment, like active, so at any given time, if I need to know how many students are enrolled in our district, I'm, I can click on this and tell you it's nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven. I can tell you what grade, and I can hover over, and you can see right there, in first grade, there's six hundred and thirty-six, which makes up six point eight, four, four percent of our students. I think this kind of information at your fingertips is really powerful. And when I can put this granularly in the, in the, in the, you know, and not only in the hands of our leadership here at the board, but we can start putting this into the hands of our building leaders and their staffs, I think, I think it changes the game. I think it really changes the game.
Well, I think you've done a great job. So do we have other questions?
No question.
Okay, do we need a motion to, um, put that to the?
No, that, that, what will happen is that we will have that as an attachment, as a, a recommendation on the February twenty-second board meeting for approval. But, you, you know, like with anything else, we want to give you, you, you know, an opportunity to ask questions before we just put it on a board agenda and, and have an understanding of it. And what I would encourage anybody to do, if they have questions between now and then, you may not have any right now, but Dustin's forgotten more about some of these things than I know, and, and I'm okay with saying that. But, but he, he'll be able to explain, especially on the, on the background technology side, what, what some of that means.
Okay.
Mike, I assume that, uh, Mr. Lampy's been involved in, in this, uh, negotiation too?
Um, this has all been vetted by Bricker and Graydon through their legal department and actually looking, I think they actually used some of their copyright department to look at it as well.
Yeah, we use Jeff, one of their colleagues, Jeff Knight, out of Columbus, who does a lot of their copyright work. That's actually who we, I spent lots of time with him. We became best friends. Actually, we became such good friends, we're actually going to present together at OASBO in April. So we, we became such good friends, we decided to do a presentation together.
Cool. Well, there you go.
Good job, Dustin, and Mike. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. But before we get started on the, on the next item, which is Brookwood, and my favorite part of the, uh, agendas, I just want to make a comment about Mr. Holbrook today at his presentation at the State of the Schools. I thought you did an excellent job. Um, very proud to be sitting there and, and listening to how far this district has come, um, and the data, and how driven we are with data. And it really proves that, you know, it's where you can actually do real measurement to see where we've been and where we are today. So I just wanted to publicly say that, Mr. Holbrook.
Well, thank you. And what I'm going to say to that is that I'm going to go back to the phrase I used, you win with people. We can have all the data we want. If we don't have good people that's also here doing that, the plan's just the plan. And so, you, you know, I'm just fortunate and blessed to work with, we, we've just got quality people all over the place that, that make my job a lot easier every day. And, um, you know, a lot of them are really experts in certain areas where I may not be. I mean, and no one's going to be an expert in every area, but collaboratively together, we, we certainly, um, have started to move the needle for, for kids.
Yeah. And not to, I, that goes to all of the admin and the teachers and everybody in the district. It was a very proud day, I thought. So thank you very much.
I'd like to add too, that the, the opportunities that our students are going to have over the next few years are mind-blowing with the, the, uh, Butler Tech joining forces with Miami University. And then the whole idea of providing, uh, college educations at no cost at Miami University, uh, regionals is phenomenal. And it's, I know, Mike, you've been working in the background on, on getting that going. Um, and kudos, kudos to that because that's, we would never have thought that was possible. And those new opportunities for our kids, for Hamilton kids, and that, what do they call it, the Hamilton Plan?
Hamilton Promise.
It was great. Hamilton Promise, it's great.
And, and I, and I think it also speaks to our community. There aren't many communities that have a community foundation that works and supports many of these things. And, you, you know, it's all about exposure and opportunity for kids is what this is about. And between that, the early college academy and the over twenty college credit plus courses that we offer at the high school level prior to kids ever leaving our campus, that we have expanded opportunities for kids to be exposed to college-level courses in a variety of different ways. And we're going to look to continue to expand that. I, I mean, but we are certainly on the right path.
Yes.
I, I would like to say too, I mean, you, not only the community foundation, but let's, let's be honest, a few years ago, working with the city was not, not always a smooth sailing for the, for us. And now we are partnering with the city to provide these opportunities and working closely with them. And that's just, again, going back to working with, together collaboratively with all these different entities. And, uh, I, I just, I think it's a great time to be in Hamilton and with all the things that we're doing. So.
We have a lot of momentum going, and, and we just need to continue that momentum and build off of it and be happy with our accomplishments, but also look to continue to improve.
Great day for education in Hamilton. Okay, um, Brookwood Elementary.
Yes, we have Brookwood Elementary here to present as one of our two, um, building reports tonight. And with that, I'm going to, um, introduce Eileen Ernst, uh, building principal at Brookwood, and she's going to introduce, um, her team that is with her this evening.
Well, thank you all very much. Thanks for having us here this afternoon to present a little bit about some of the work that we are doing here at Brookwood. So I do want to introduce our team. So we have Kayla Ritchie, our assistant principal with us, Nikki Jaleel, our math coach, and Brittany Galbreth, our literacy coach. So as a second-year administrator at Brookwood, I spent a lot of time last year listening, observing, analyzing data, and strategic planning with our BLT. We worked as a team to envision where do we want to see Brookwood in three years, and then broke it down year by year into actionable steps. We have a team of dedicated educators who are committed to the success of our students. It is the people. The people are what make the difference. So this year, we started our year with four game changers as we work to positively impact our Brookwood school community. We know that some of our changes will make a positive impact and others will need to be revised. However, we know that we can't stand still. We need to make changes, reflect, and move forward to make sure that we are giving our students and community the best education in the most loving environment. We want our students, staff, and families to feel loved, supported, and to grow. So tonight, we're going to focus on four game changers and where we currently are with those. So we're going to talk through our instructional coaching shifts and how we work to better utilize our two instructional coaches at Brookwood. We're also going to cover our multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS process. This is a district initiative this year, and it aligns perfectly with the needs that our BLT saw last year with our strategic planning. We're also implementing the new reading program, Expeditionary Learning, in grades three through six, and we continue to work to build a culture of feedback throughout our school community. So I'm going to turn it over to Nikki Jaleel, and she is going to talk about the shifts in our instructional coaching.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Just as with any sport, the better you know your players, the better at coaching them you will be. Given that this is our second year at Brookwood, uh, we are really getting to know our players. Because of this, we are able to provide a much more focused, intentional, individualized coaching support to our teachers. In continuing to move forward our coaching practices, we went from optional to universal coaching in our building. Our tiered approach to coaching is universal, so no matter where you are in your skill level, we can meet you there and help you improve upon your craft. With the mindset that everyone can grow, we opened up coaching to every person, and the results are in. Just in the first semester, we have had two hundred and sixty-nine coaching meetings. Definitely a game changer for our building. Our month-at-a-glance planning meetings is something that I am personally very excited about and frankly, very proud of. Once a month, we meet with our teachers to dive into the standards for the upcoming unit that they will be teaching. The model is such that we plan backwards. We dissect our standards, as well as the upcoming end-of-unit test, and create a gam- a game plan for instruction. Through conversational reflection from the previous year to data-driven knowledge of students' needs, we are able to determine how best to support our students, students in the current unit by providing additional support in scaffolds, enrichments, or even just more explicit instruction with intentional practice. The structure for backwards planning is that every grade, two through six, will meet with the coaches monthly to plan for the upcoming unit. Kindergarten and first grade, because they are not depart- departmentalized, have been asked to meet specifically with the reading coach only to backwards plan. We didn't want to overload, there are already full plates, by having them meet with both reading and math. However, every one of our K and one teachers have opted to plan with math as well, even though it was optional for them. I think this speaks volumes to their dedication that every child will grow. Aside from generating a multitude of teaching ideas, we are also able to make adjustments to the actual assessments based on prior experience with the units. The picture on the left is one of a backwards planning session with our third-grade math teachers. During our time, they talked about the need to make changes to the test itself. These changes lend themselves to the scaffolds and differentiation that some of the students need in order to be more successful. Backwards planning with our teachers has truly been a game changer in addressing our standards. As our building continues to build our culture of feedback, of course, we have surveyed around coaching to approve upon our practices. We've included a few of the comments to show teachers' thoughts on the new coaching model. Based on just a few of the comments, teachers feel supported, represented, and understood. Our job as coaches is to actively listen to our teachers' needs so they, so that we may support them in the best way possible. Meeting each individual teacher where they are and working on what they need will make everyone successful in the classroom, adults and children alike. I am now going to turn it back over to Mrs. Ernst, who will talk about our MTSS process.
So like I mentioned earlier, we have a district initiative this year with multi-tiered systems of support, which basically means that all students are getting what they need each day, whether they are performing above, on, or below grade level. We have multiple teams made up of both teachers, coaches, support staff, and administrators to review student and building data, as well as the interventions that are in place. As with any new process, we have it focused on intentional staff training, reflection, and making shifts as needed. We know it's important that we are growing and supporting all of our students, and that takes time. We dedicate time to areas that are important and work to make sure that the process is both meaningful and manageable. This isn't a one-year thing that we're working to build. We are working to build a system that we're going to be able to implement from year to year. One of the systems that we are working to strengthen is making sure that no child slips through the cracks. Our map assessment is one data point at one point in time. And our risk spreadsheet, so kind of what Mr. Mundee was talking a little bit about with Aubrey, our risk spreadsheet helps us to look at students capturing various data points over time so that we can support students and intervene early. It's important to look at the whole child and make sure that the correct supports are in place so that we can make sure that they're ready for the next grade level. We are super appreciative to Dustin and for working so closely with our Brookwood team as we develop and update this risk spreadsheet this year.
This year, we have shifted how we utilize some of our staff. We moved some co-teachers to support a greater number of students and added more intervention teachers. The key components of our MTSS process are intervention, progress monitoring, and reflection. This allows us to be more consistent and intentional. Our progress monitoring is being done with fidelity and is more widespread, which allows us to get a better grasp, excuse me, on student growth and progress. Come visit our building at any time, and you will see intervention staff pulling out students and pushing in to support kids. Our teachers and staff are seeing the value in these groups also. Having students reach, receive additional intensive and strategic interventions has been extremely beneficial. Having another trained set of eyes to look at student needs and growth is invaluable. We've been able to intervene for more students in really targeted ways. As part of our MTSS implementation, we are monitoring the increases and decreases in each tier. We want to see a decrease in tiers two and three, which are mainly students who need intervention, and a growth in tiers one and zero, which are students that are achieving at grade level or higher. After middle-of-the-year map testing, we've had relatively little change as a building between the tiers, but we have been able to notice some trends at grade levels. Examining the grade level tier changes helps us to look a bit closer at grade level trends and see areas of strength and areas that we need to focus on more. After a semester of our new MTSS process under our belt, we surveyed our staff to see what they thought of the process. Some words appeared over and over in their feedback, including organized, collaborative, intentional, responsive, consistent, and supportive. I will now turn it over to Mrs. Galbreth to talk about our third game changer, Expeditionary Learning.
Good afternoon. Teams need a game plan.
Teams need a game plan, a common goal to help them succeed. In Hamilton, we often talk about arrows all moving in the same direction. That is to say that a team functions best when everyone knows the play. Following the success of our common math curriculum, we have adopted Expeditionary Learning in grades three through six classrooms. While this was considered a pilot year, our teachers were all-in, and every intermediate classroom in our building chose to use the new curriculum. With our new playbooks in hand, we began working to provide the best instruction for our students. EL moves our teachers from balanced literacy to structured literacy. This shift allows for systematic instruction with a clear scope and sequence. This knowledge-based curriculum brings the world into our classrooms. It also shines a light on grade-level content and Tier 1 instruction. It is rigorous, and it allows our students the opportunity to collaborate with their peers. It also allows for common language among teachers in our district. Teachers can meet in lesson plan, whether they are in Brookwood or one of our seven other elementary school buildings. In the pictures we provided, you can see in the bottom center there is from a third-grade classroom. These students were using a protocol similar to Kagan's Give-One-Get-One to share information that they discovered about frogs in one of the books they were reading in their modules. While we know how beneficial this can be, change can be hard, even positive change. Our team felt it was crucial to ensure our teachers felt extremely supported during this process. Every step of the way, we asked teachers for suggestions of what they would need to help make this shift. Surveys and conversations challenged us as a team to answer some excellent questions from our teachers. What does this look like in a classroom? What will planning look like? And what can our leadership team do to help teachers have more time to process this new way of teaching? We set to work to find ways that we could answer these questions, and this became a timeline for us, and you can see that here. Just like an athlete preparing for our game, our teachers were craving the ability to watch the tape, so to speak. They wanted to see EL in action. Our first priority was getting our teachers into a classroom. Thanks to Eileen's Connections at DECA Prep, in May of 2023, we were able to take teachers to two third-grade classrooms to see EL in action. Then, we had time to sit and debrief with teachers who have taught the curriculum and coaches who have supported the curriculum. From there, we began planning a summer EL planning session. We had a focus on mapping out the first module for timing and to begin looking at the lessons in more detail. This helped form some of the basis of the backward planning sessions that we now do at all grade levels. In August, we launched EL in classrooms. After a month of instruction, we had three through six teachers come together and talk about further support that they would need. I think this has really helped our teachers kind of embrace something that they may feel like they may not have had as much control over, right? They have this curriculum, and now they get to be a part of the building of it. Our instructional team came together to help plan for half-day planning sessions. Teacher-grade-level teams and I sit together and backward-plan a whole module at a time. To date, we have had two and a half planning times per grade level. We were even able to offer these planning sessions up to teachers from other buildings as well. During this time, we look at the assessments, dive in to start planning scaffolds and timing for our teachers. Teachers share successes, and they problem-solve obstacles. These have been resounding success. They are often pinpointed in surveys as being appreciated and useful. And now, Eileen will talk to you more about the culture of our building.
Brookwood's staff have had a high turnover in administrators over the years. So starting new last year in the building, we knew the importance of giving our staff a voice and respecting what was shared, whether it was a popular or unpopular opinion. After our first semester staff survey this year, 93% of our staff believe that Brookwood is a great place to teach and learn. And I believe working to build our culture of feedback is a direct correlation to that. You can see some of the other survey data up on the screen as well. As educators, so much happens in our buildings each and every day. We know that sometimes we hit the mark, and other times we miss it. We work as leaders in our building to model owning and learning from our mistakes because working together to problem-solve and intentionally move forward is what our students and staff deserve. Our community deserves a school that is working to be the best version of itself each and every day. We asked staff how they felt heard in one of our more recent surveys. It's encouraging to see that our staff see the intention of our work. They know that we work to protect their time, and what we move forward with and put in front of them is done with intention and given with a purpose. They also see the value of our surveys and how we work with our building leadership team to reflect and problem-solve, as well as make the quick changes that we can too. We always say that we have an open-door policy, but it is wonderful that our staff see it as more than just words, that they feel listened to and supported. So how have we gotten our school to a community where 93% of our staff feel that Brookwood is a great place to teach and learn? These pictures show a few of the things that we have worked on, and honestly, some things that we are really proud of, too. We continue to conduct short staff surveys each month. It helps us keep a pulse on the building and honestly, problem-solve while that problem is still a small one. We've made shifts in our professional development days to offer different workshops that reflect not only the needs we see in our data, but ideas from our teachers and staff as well. The last couple PD days, staff have been able to choose the sessions that best fit the needs of their class. Administrators and coaches are also working to be visible in classrooms and share positive feedback and ideas to incorporate in their classroom through our learning walks. We've revised our committees this school year based on staff feedback to better meet our needs. We added in apparent involvement and MTSS committee, as well as reworked our academic committee. Everyone participates, and everyone has a voice. Brookwood also has a new PTO board this year, and we're working closely with them to engage and to support our greater school community. We also know and recognize the importance of staff recognition. This is something, honestly, that I am really proud of and that I value. We have amazing staff in our building. They work so hard each day. They need to feel valued. They need to see that the work that they do makes a difference. Just like we talked about last year, we have to fill our staff's cups so that they can put their best self in front of students each day. We know that this means extras like our sunshine cart and raffles, but we also know that this means truly listening to their concerns and problem-solving together. We need both of those to positively impact our culture. It's also awesome to see our staff working to spread the culture of feedback with their students in their classrooms as they focus on goal-setting and reviewing progress with students, too. So earlier this school year, Mr. Holbrook challenged our buildings to dive deeper into our student data and to be responsive to the needs of our school community. After we reviewed our fall MAP data and the report card data earlier this year, we amended some of our building goals to heighten our focus on what would make the greatest impact on our Brookwood School community. We continue to monitor these goals and continually work to make the small changes and big shifts to best support our students and staff. We started our presentation this evening with a quote from Babe Ruth. "Never let the fear of striking out keep you from playing the game." Our game changers this year all align to support our goals, our staff, our students, and our families. Like we talked about in the beginning, we can't be so afraid to fail that we don't make any changes. We know that if we want to positively impact the game for our students, we have to be responsive and continually work to be the best version of ourselves. We just want to say thank you so much for giving us some time this evening to share some of the work that we are proud of doing at Brookwood this year, too. So thank you.
Great job, and continually amazes me what terrific staff and teachers we've got out there and how hard and focused you are on the work of educating our kids. And so I thank you for that very much. So you're making... You're changing people's lives.
Doing a great job.
We are blessed with just absolutely amazing staff who care so much about our kids and the dedication of their time, their talent, their love. You see it every day in the classrooms.
You have a great staff over there. I know many of them personally. You're doing a great job here. Keep it up.
I liked from the beginning, you were talking about coaching and meeting teachers where they are. We're wanting to do that with students. Doing it with teachers, your first group I've heard really talking about that, meeting the teachers and what their needs are. And that's sort of what I'm hearing all over your presentation is, yeah, we're going to get to the kids. The kids are benefiting from this. Improving teacher morale, working with the teachers, finding out what they need. I love the feedback situation that you've been doing. But meeting the teachers where they are and building them up is really good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would commend you on surveying your staff and getting their feedback and input. I think that's a great idea, so certainly very nicely done.
It's hard to feedback sometimes. It is definitely hard sometimes, but it helps us to know what's going on in the buildings, and then how do we problem-solve?
And if I may, with that, it speaks volumes of our leadership that our staff feel comfortable giving both the hard feedback as well as the good.
Yes, it does.
Ms. Ernst, Ms. Ritchie, Ms. Galbraith, Ms. Jaleel, you know, your leadership in that building is critical. Nikki, I can still recall 2016 or '17. We were at Michigan State. And what's that? And I remember a conversation quite vividly. And we were talking about data, and we were talking about how we're going to do all those things. You mentioned backward design. You mentioned, you know, how you're using that data. You mentioned the MTSS. Those things are hard. They're hard things. Think about a classroom of 25 different students, all that have 25 different needs, and you're trying to develop a plan for each one of them. In 2015-16, I'm not sure that we even understood the data to even start developing those plans. Here we are today. We're talking about not only plans being developed, but earlier today, I talked a little bit about growth mindset, and I spoke about it isn't just for students. It's for everybody. And our coaches are not only providing support from a growth standpoint with our students, but also our staff. And I think all of those things can't be overlooked. This is not easy to do. It's easy to learn how to analyze the data. The most difficult thing is to take it and how do you use it to improve instruction, improve results with kids? And you're making that progress. And I do want to stress, that is not easy work. That when you start and think about that, it is really difficult work to do. But we are making progress due to your leadership and meeting people where they are and not making excuses, but let's build a program. And the word that I continued to see over and over in all the feedback was intentionality, intentional. There's a purpose. It isn't just looked at as a checkmark in a box, and then I move on. There's a reason why you're doing that. And that's the reason you're getting the results that you're getting. That's the reason I think that your staff is responding positively is because they see that that purpose is there. And so I thank each one of you for the work that you do every day and the work that I know you're going to continue to do with our students in the future. But thank you very much.
Very nice.
Good morning, Mr. Holbrook. We have another school building.
We do. We have Riverview Elementary here also today. I think we have Anne Marie Barth, and her team are here today to talk to us a little bit about what is going on at Riverview.
All right. I think...
And I'll let you take this over. You might need to know a little bit.
I'm Anne Marie Barth. I'm the principal at Riverview. This is my first year. Last year, I was AP there with Josh Marjoram. And then this is my first-grade teacher, Fran Verdon. You've, I'm sure, heard her boys' names on the football field. And then Katie Milders is my assistant principal. So we're just going to talk to you a little bit today about one of our big initiatives this year is we call it a K3 Intervention Block. One thing at Riverview that we always really stress for our teachers and our students, obviously, is that we believe in them. They come, obviously, with a lot of challenges, but we have found ways to make those relationships and make sure that we are doing what's best for, again, every individual child. But we want them to believe in themselves, and it's really speaking from the teachers first that, hey, we believe in you. We've got you. We support you. And kind of what Brookwood said, it does start with the teachers. So it does start with administration kind of speaking into them, like, hey, you've got this. So that was one of kind of our themes this year, was just that we believe that our students will achieve. We've noticed that our students do a wonderful job with growth. However, if they start so far behind, it is very hard for them to hit that achievement. So we are looking into a couple different things this year and trying out some things to really get them to not only grow, but grow more than a year's growth in one year, which, again, is hard. But how are we going to get them to achieve? We know they can get there. So a couple of our building goals. One is to improve our K3 literacy score on the state report card. Right now, I believe we're at one or one and a half. I think there was an issue there. They said that we were at one. But we want to get that to three stars or higher. And so this basically means that we have to show that a student grows from the fall of, let's say, their kindergarten year to the fall of their first-grade year. So that's one indicator that goes into K3 literacy. Another thing that goes into it is the third-grade reading guarantee. So those students get a chance to take that assessment in the fall, and then they get a chance, again, to pass it in the spring and be proficient. So a 700 score is proficient. So that's another kind of data point that we get. And then another building goal is we want to increase our percentage of students by 10% per grade level, per subject. This RIT score is basically making sure that they're kind of growing along their grade level. And we want to increase that percentage by 10% by the spring of '24. So these are a couple of the steps that we're taking this year to help us kind of reach our goals. It's a lot, so. Okay, our first thing is, is we want to... I don't know if you've ever heard this term, but they always say in education, you can't Tier 2 and Tier 3 your way out of a Tier 1 problem. When we walked into Riverview last year, I realized that we had some implementation of a consistent systematic Tier 1 instruction program in math. We had just gotten a new program in grades K2 Really Great Reading for reading. That is strictly a phonics program. So you're not going to get any comprehension skills out of Really Great Reading. It's strictly what are these sounds? And then blending those sounds to read words, okay? And then grades three through five, we adopted EL. They are to have Engage New York as well. And then grade six has EL as well, but they use Math CMP. So those are our Tier 1 instructional programs. What I noticed is there were some gaps there as far as fidelity of Tier 1. So a lot of times, they're going straight to what does that child need? What is their gap? And they're filling that gap, but they never then got them back to Tier 1 to make them achieve. So they're not hearing. They're not exposing. They're not being exposed enough to the Tier 1 curriculum. We kind of cheated that and kind of just filled gaps, which was great. It showed us great growth, but never again got us to that achievement point, which we know our kids could do. So a couple... Another thing that we decided to implement was building walkthroughs. So these are done by coaches and admin. They're non-evaluative. So a lot of times, teachers, if they're not used to seeing a principal in the classroom, they're like, what am I supposed to be doing? But these are non-evaluative. It literally just gives us data. So we fill out a Google form, and then we sit down as a BLT, and we talk through those forms, what we're seeing in the building. We would like to achieve 70% of our Tier 1 instruction being used with the curriculum is being used 70% of that time. We also took a big venture this year and really dug into implementing our MTSS process. My biggest thing is, is I can't do this all on my own. Katie can't do this all on her own. We need to build up our teachers as leaders. So we have a BLT, a building leadership team. And that's kind of... We talk a little bit more about like how the building is running, what we need to improve with schedules and things like that. For MTSS, we're really digging down into instruction. And so we're focusing, well, there's three parts to MTSS. There's behavior, there's social-emotional, and then there's academic. So at this point, our behavior, our social-emotional, we've done a pretty good job on with our referrals and things like that. So at this point, our behavior, our social-emotional, we've done a pretty good job on with our referrals and things like that. So we looked at data, where is our biggest need? And of course, we're looking at instruction. So our first big goal was we built an MTSS team. Again, very important to have people, a voice from every different area. So my MTSS team is 17 members. It's huge, okay? But again, it's a representative from SPED, ESL, my SFSS. I don't know, do you guys know what that is? Okay. Student and Family Support Services. Okay, so basically like a school counselor. But she does some of the mental health piece as well. A lot of the mental health, actually. Our school psychologist, administrators, our title teachers, and our coaches. So we're trying to get voices from all different, again, sorry, and grade level teams, teachers. Trying to get a voice for everybody. Some of these responsibilities include them. We've taught them the PD on MTSS and the structures. Now we want them to present it to their staff. So a lot of times, I think it's important for them to hear from their own teachers and their own peers as far as the PD goes. They also lead their team data meetings. So every six to eight weeks, we kind of assess the student data, what does the growth look like? They're leading that in their teams. Ms. Milders and I, and then our coaches are walking around to support. But I really, again, want them to be, feel empowered to be a leader in their team. And then they also serve as staff mentors. So if they have an MTSS question, I'm like, go to your team member first, maybe see up, you know, hit up your ESL team member and then come to us if that's last resort. I'm gonna turn it over to Katie and talk about some non-negotiables.
So when Anne Marie and I were looking at where some of our kids had the largest gaps, we noticed that limited foundational literacy skills was among probably one of our most pressing issues for our K to three students. To address this, prior to the beginning of the school year, we designed and then ultimately implemented a K to three literacy intervention block. During this block, we gave our grade levels five non-negotiables that ensure fidelity of implementation. So the intervention block has to be 30 minutes every day of a typical school week. Students had to be grouped according to their Amplify scores. So that's one of our K to three assessments that we have this year. And the groups had to be targeted to the most foundational skill deficit that was flagged by that assessment for that individual student. The intervention used in that intervention block has to be a systematic and research-based intervention curriculum. And for this year and next year, literacy is the only focus of our intervention block. Although Anne Marie and I, and me sometimes more, I'm a future planner for sure. We've been talking about our three to five-year plan and we definitely want to incorporate a math intervention block within that three to five-year plan.
So we realized that we just said we have all these non-negotiables teachers you have to do. There was a lot of, of course, just kind of giving the why. That's usually what people want to know is, why? Why are we doing this? Well, first, we have to make sure that it's research-based. We have to make sure that we're doing things systematically, right? You know, when kids are doing this from grade level to grade level, they don't make that linear growth. And so we need to make sure that, you know, all those things are in line. So those are kind of some non-negotiables. But we did say, all right, well, there is some flexibility to this. The grade levels determine the time of day that they wanted their intervention to occur. So, and Fran's gonna talk to you a little bit more here about what first grade looks like and it'll give you a better picture. Some grade levels decided to combine students across the grade level. So they looked at their scores on Amplify and said, okay, here's our kiddos that fall between the first and the 15th percentile as a grade level. So we're gonna group them accordingly at that time. So yes, it's a lot of switching and a lot of kids moving classrooms. But we're able to hit that one skill and kids are grouped likely there. Grade level teams also determine which teacher serves each group. So some teachers have a better foundational skill in phonics, where others have better foundational skills in fluency. So based on what they felt as was their kind of forte, they can choose that.
So these are just some pictures we took of students in their intervention groups. There are a few awesome things that our teachers are doing that we wanted to note for you guys. Group size is based on how foundational the skill being targeted is. So the students with our largest gaps are the ones that are in the smallest groups, receiving the most intensive interventions. Our staff has also really taken the initiative to have all hands on deck for these intervention blocks because our staff has really gotten on board with how important filling these foundational skill gaps is. Our educational assistants are even helping to manage some of the groups where students that they serve throughout the school day are placed to ensure that all students in the group, not just the students with identified disabilities, are receiving the intervention that they need. Our first grade team, which Fran will talk more about, has also taken the initiative to pilot a brand-new research-based intervention program that allows for differentiation even within a single intervention group, which can be seen in the photo on the bottom left, where one of our educational assistants is actually helping manage the group that some of her students are a part of.
So I'm gonna bring Fran Verdon up here. We chose first grade to come and speak. And they've done a lot of deconstructing and constructing, and deconstructing and constructing because we realized that it's not a perfect plan right away. And in fact, our whole process for this K3 intervention block, we have deconstructed and reconstructed multiple times. And they have really taken it with grace and just gotten to the grind and said, okay, this isn't working. What are we gonna do? So I wanted her to come and just kind of talk a little bit about their process and how it's flowing.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm good, thank you. So in our first grade groups, if you notice, my first point is data. Without data, it's just an opinion. That's how we talk in our groups. So when we sit down, we go over the Amplify data. We break that down. There's actually six individual groups that the kids can fall into. And they can either be, as you see the color coding, they're based on a percentage. So what we hit is our students who, what we call are in the red. So our students who aren't performing on grade level, those are the ones who spike up immediately and get our response. Now, the fun part is, is sometimes they can be across the board in red. So like we discussed earlier, we always go with the most basic and most important deficit that stands out. We take, this is where it gets fun. Now bear with me. So we take those and then we also correlate that to our MAP data. Our MAP also has a bunch of subunits. So we look at our subunits and foundational skills being one. And we make sure that they're cross-checking and aligning to each other. So if we have a red, but I have a teacher who says, but Fran, they're green in MAP. It doesn't make sense. So then we sit down and we bring in another data point, which is the teacher's professional opinion and their observation. So this is not something that is, oh, hey, here's a list. Let's break it up and let's go. This is, we're not doing that at Riverview. We're paying very close attention to these kids and where their deficits are. We then take the groups and we break them amongst teachers. Our next part is to assess and distribute. I say that, you notice the acronym, Dave. We joke in our pod, we'll go, hey, we doing Dave, right? That's how we remember this. So we assess and we distribute abilities. And that's not just the students, that's the teachers. I have a stronger phonics foundation. I came from a phonics program. So I typically take the kids who have, I don't know how to say it, so basically the sounds. I'll take the kids who need the sounds. Yeah. And then the other teachers have varying strengths. So we break them up according to teacher strength, not just students and just going and having fun with whatever teacher you want to go to.
Do you want to talk to about Marta real quick?
Oh, yeah, we do have a new teacher who's been absolutely amazing. She does speak Spanish. So we have had multiple, I think right now we're at eight in our grade level alone in the past three months, new students who are non-English speaking. So we do have an absolutely wonderful teacher who will be taking those students to work with them on their basic letter names, letter sounds, and trying to get them up to speed, which we talked about earlier, is extremely difficult when we're talking years versus a few months. Yeah, Martha, she's amazing. So then our vary, that's what we were talking about earlier, it has to be fun. I mean, we do all this data and it's data, 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 but it also has to be fun. So we ensure that by breaking them up and letting them move rooms. Our kids think that it's absolutely wonderful and they're like the big kids. So they get really excited. If we have to readjust for some reason, I get told about it by my students. They make sure that I hear it. We didn't get to go see Ms. Henry. Why not? So we make that fun. So we do this for a six to eight-week period. We've seen massive success with it through our first round. Just for the awareness portion, we targeted one thing. We stuck with it. We jumped leaps and bounds as far as a very basic important skill, which is hearing sounds and moving them around within words. So then we decide at the end of six to eight weeks, do we keep them? Is it working? Or what else do we need to switch to? We do not do anything before that six weeks. Any questions for me before I move on?
I was glad you were gonna.
Oh, I know, but just for me, because they're.
So it has to take a while to assign the students to the different groups. How, so once they get into that group, they're in there for six weeks?
Yes, they don't move.
Okay, so what if you have students with overlapping needs that are in different groups?
We hit the most important and the most basic. So that student will come with, there is basically the six, I'm sorry, Katie, could you show me that again? Sorry, no, we're not done, but I know I'm gonna walk away. So if you look, I mean, I put it into very, a different vocabulary. But if you look at the word sounds decoding word reading, this is middle of the year. The beginning of the year is phonological awareness, which is basically sound. So we would start there. That would be our first and very. But because of this program, most of our kids bumped out of that. So it's no longer on my list, which is a problem in terms of.
So how many groups do you have in a classroom? Do you have like two or three in a group? To divvy up all the students?
Okay, so the way it works is each grouping, so decoding will go with. Sorry, sorry. Decoding will go with Marta. Can you tell I'm a teacher at heart? I cannot sit still.
Well, you're on TV, so you gotta remember that now.
That's not my thing. I teach. So we'll have one teacher who will take decoding. I'm taking decoding as well, so we split that between two. Then we have an IS who will be taking reading fluency. We have another teacher taking word reading. If you notice, each teacher wound up getting about 10 students. We then break those 10 students down to smaller groups, depending on what they do within that group. The program that Ms. Milder showed you earlier, which is a computer reading program, which is a top-tier research-based program, I can put my kids on and they can still be doing exactly what I'm doing. Yeah, it's beautiful. We've seen a lot of growth with that, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think one of the other things, too, to point out is, so that's what first grade looks like. It's almost like each grade level looks different based on their needs. It depends, like third grade, for example, if kiddos are at grade level and we don't see any significant gaps, they might be on a program that is research-based, that is a curriculum-type program during that 30-minute time. Because we're looking just at intervention during that time. So those kids are still getting stretched instead of sitting in a group that doesn't apply to them. That's wasted 30 minutes, you know? So we've really used our online programs that luckily we've been able to adopt and such for them to be able to do during that time. Okay, so we realized we needed to use the right data. We are, I am so pumped, and I think a lot of us are, that our K through three teachers, that we have Amplify. MAP is a great assessment. However, what you'll notice about MAP is it is not timed, so it doesn't really give that, hmm, how well do they know these skills? It builds a lot on comprehension. It builds a lot on following directions. So our students who maybe are ESL or students who might have a disability, that can be real tricky. Or just a low language deficit, that's really tricky for a kiddo coming in, trying to take the MAP, okay? So it is a great data point. However, in K1, K2, it's not necessarily the best data point. Most of the time when you're looking at data, especially MTSS recommends, you should have triangulated data, so three data points. So like Fran said, we're using Amplify, we're using MAP, and then we're looking at teacher observation in the classroom. Are they able to do their work independently? Are they able to read the directions on their own? Sure. Sometimes they get to the MAP and it's your brightest kid in the class, you think? And he totally bombs it. And it might just be because he didn't follow the directions. His sound wasn't on. I mean, there's so many different things that can get in the way of getting that accurate data. We try to do the best we can, but sometimes it doesn't always get there. Amplify is teacher, student. So you're hearing exactly what they're saying, you're scoring it as you're going through, and it's one-minute assessments. There's four assessments that they do? Yeah. Five? Yeah, five batteries. But again, it's that teacher with one kid. So yes, it takes a lot of time. But it's really what we need in order to make sure we're grouping them appropriately. So like I said, Amplify is timed. It's about, it takes about five to 10 minutes, depending on grade level, again, per student. So yes, this is time-consuming. It's taken at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. So this is when sometimes, too, we have, we pull our coaches in and we're like, okay, help us out. Sometimes our ISs, we're really having to, again, as a team, as a school community, work, you know, work with these kiddos. It is administered one-on-one. And then it's all consistent based on their grade level. So where should they be based on their grade level? MAP, kind of as they start to answer questions correctly, it adjusts and it gets harder. So sometimes you'll see a second grader that says, or first grader, I should say. If they keep answering questions correctly, it'll go, it's not reading to me anymore. And they're like, well, yeah, because you're getting them right. It's getting harder. So it will adjust to their level. Again, Amplify is based on their grade level.
So we've talked a lot with our staff on selecting the right data to analyze. But we noticed at Riverview, there wasn't a user-friendly way for teachers to compare student data within the overall grade level without having to go to each individual student's assessment profile. So prior to the beginning of the year, we built grade-level data sheets like this one, where teachers can enter their progress monitoring data for each six to eight-week intervention cycle. Teachers select an intervention focus from their dropdown menu as well as select which research-based intervention is being used to target that focus area. The data entered into the overall grade level tab then auto-populates into individual student tabs on the exact same spreadsheet. It also automatically creates individual student graphs, so growth over time in the course of an evaluation and intervention cycle can be easily visualized for each student. These grade-level spreadsheets are allowing our teachers to directly compare student growth for students being served in the same intervention group. So for example, if two students in the same group and one is making growth and one is not, this comparison allows us to pinpoint an individual area of concern for that specific student. But on the other hand, if all of the students in a particular intervention group are failing to make growth, it allows the team to pinpoint an area of concern for an overall instructional topic. So looking at our existing data and the impact of new initiatives is helping us plan for the future. Looking at a 2017 study, it suggested that the impact of curricular and instructional shifts can be multiplied by six times from the initial implementation to the end of a four-year period of consistent implementation. We know that implementing new curriculum, interventions, and initiatives in a building is not going to yield the ultimate end result that we're working towards in the very first year. But looking at our data right now helps show the trajectory that we're on and support our action steps that are currently being taken to improve student outcomes. So how are the steps that we've already taken impacting student performance? Looking at our middle-of-the-year math, MAP, we see a few key highlights. Our average achievement percentile in the building for math has increased from the 30th percentile to the 37th percentile in just one semester of instruction. Our average growth percentile for students is the 53rd percentile, meaning that on average this semester, students grew the same or more than 53% of same-age peers nationally. This data shows us that not only are students on track to make a year's worth of growth in math, but the growth in achievement percentile shows that students are exceeding their target for growth in one year. This means we're not maintaining our students' gaps. We're closing them in math. Similarly to math, our middle-of-the-year MAP reading data was promising. Average achievement percentile has increased from the 22nd percentile to the 26th percentile, again, in just a single semester of literacy instruction. And our average growth percentile for students was the 45th percentile, meaning that on average, students grew the same or more than 45% of their same-age peers nationally. Just like with math, we are not maintaining our students' gaps. We're closing them in reading. And some of the data that we are most excited about. And some of the data that we are most excited about is our Amplify data for grades K to three. The impact of data-driven targeted intervention during our intervention block is evident in the growth we've seen on this assessment. In kindergarten, at the very beginning of the year, only 16% of the students that came to us were meeting benchmark for early literacy skills. Now, after only one semester of this K to three intervention block, 57% of students in kindergarten are meeting grade-level benchmark. First grade was able to maintain their 23%, 24% of students meeting benchmark with mid-year staffing changes and significant changes in their student populations with move-ins and move-outs that impacted the fidelity of intervention that could be provided. Second grade was able to go from 23% of students meeting benchmark at the beginning of the year to now having 32% of students meeting grade-level benchmark. And third grade went from 15% of students meeting benchmark to 29% of students currently meeting benchmark. This consistent growth in multiple grade levels supports the continued implementation of this targeted literacy intervention to ensure that students have the foundational literacy skills necessary to engage in higher-level thinking and application.
Well, you probably said, why'd you bring your first-grade teacher here when her, her data doesn't look as good? So a couple of things. We had, we have a teacher in first grade who went out with cancer. She's on medical leave. So we have our long-term sub, who's Martha Ramirez, okay? First year out of school, college. She actually went to Riverview and our high school graduated from there in Miami-Hamilton. So we love having her. She's an asset to us, but she's learning. She's brand-new, she's a baby. So we have her. And then we also, our, our title teacher, who was assigned to first grade, was out on maternity leave for the first three, yeah, pretty much the first semester, just got back in January. So these ladies are pretty much single-handedly doing it with four adults, where the other grade levels are doing it with five or six. So that's, that's kind of the comparison there, too. And again, the other two, Fran's the only one who's been in first grade for two years straight, the other two were in different grade levels as well. So there's a big learning curve there. But what we see is, is that, again, with more time, more practice, them becoming more comfortable, they make great gains. So the next steps for us is, I've really noticed that, you know, the scheduling can be an absolute nightmare, so we're going to attempt to create a master schedule that's conducive to our MTSS structure. It's really important, I think, for us to really protect that K-three intervention block time. No one else can pull at that time, which can be very tricky when you're talking about ESL and you're talking about IEP and you're talking about mental health and things like that. So there are a lot of pullouts, and we're going to really try to protect those kiddos at that time. So that's one thing. Also, teachers just met today, this morning, to kind of give their feedback as far as master schedule goes. What do you guys feel like you need? How can we kind of accommodate that for you? So again, teacher voice, big-time important, and then we'll bring that to the BLT and talk-through master schedule. We also want to make sure that our grade-level data meetings are kind of almost scripted. Fran, how many kids do you guys talk about at a six-to-eight-week data cycle?
We have, we talk about the changes.
So it's about 66, I think 66 or 67 kids they're talking about at their six-to-eight-week data cycle, and that's in, that's from 8:30 to 9:10. So just imagine you've got to get through that many kids to really take a look at their data. If they're progressing and they're ready to exit, cool, we move on. If they're progressing, but we feel like it's another six weeks, great. We don't get into the weeds. It's got to be real efficient. Some, grade levels has done a beautiful job of that, and some of them need a little bit more help. So again, that's one thing that we're going to try to do, is just provide that consistent routine and procedure for them. Also, grades four through six are going, hey, what about us? We would love an intervention block time, which we didn't think at first, but they're really seeing the benefits of it. We also use Orton-Gillingham in fourth grade through sixth grade, because we realize a lot of our kids have such gaps with being able to fluently read. And in my opinion, that's one of the most important things they need to know. So next year, we would like to integrate four through six with a literacy intervention That is pretty much it. I know that was a lot of data talk and such, but I want you guys to just really have a good grasp and understanding of what does that K-three literacy grade look like on a report card? And it's a big mountain to climb, just like all of them, right? But we are, we're putting our feet down and we're grinding. So what kind of questions do you have for me?
I don't think any questions, but wow, that is a lot of data. So, and to see that you're so focused on that is, is impressive, because you're right, you know, without data, it's just an opinion. So I congratulate you on really focusing on that, particularly focusing on these kids that are not quite where they need to be. It's just amazing what you do for our children, and, and thank you so much for that.
I agree. It's very impressive how you're using the data. Not all kids learn the same. You're using the data to, to form what they need and giving them the intervention that they need, and you're meeting their needs, and that's awesome. I'm really impressed.
Who developed the, you were talking about, you had to go to multiple places to find the data, and then you, who came up with that spreadsheet?
Katie Melders.
There you go. It's, it's amazing to me that, I mean, you saw a need, I think we need to talk to, you know, the software developers about this, but anyway.
Yes, we do.
But that's it. The sophistication of using the data, every year it seems to get more and more sophisticated. I think about a surgeon going after what the root problem is of a student, of a student's needs, and you're right, if they don't have those little basic things, you can't just skip over and hope they get it further down the line. You gotta, you gotta attack those, and you guys are doing a marvelous job with that. I know it's a real pain to do that, but the ideas that, as we sit here and I see all these different ideas, well, man, I wish those were around back in the day, you know, when we rode dinosaurs to school. But, but what you guys, I mean, the, the precision that you're doing those things and really focusing on what the problem is, I commend you on doing that. It's hard work. There's no doubt it's hard work, and you might not see it this year, but you're going to see it down the line, and I know you get those glitches in first grade. But Fran, I know that you're doing a great job down there, so.
Cheers.
Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Really nice.
Just to speak on that really quick, sorry, Dr. Copus, but that's one thing that I think our teachers are saying to us is, hey, this is great to have all this data, but we have got to be able to see it.
Yeah.
On one screen about this kiddo. And so that's been a lot of our talk in our MTSS district committee. How can we get this? We're working through ABR and things like that, but how can we have it friendly so that teachers don't just say, forget it, I can't do this anymore, it's too much time?
Well, we use, I mean, they have binders, and you'd have to go through, flip through the binders and look at section A to find out kid, what the kid's doing in section B, and having that all in one place, so you don't have to spend a lot of time. So you can get a one-minute conversation about it to get, and really drill down on it, is, is, is great.
President Baker, I have a few comments I'd like to share with Mr. Holbrook and the administrators and my fellow board members. Principal Barth was kind enough to host me on a school visit recently, and unfortunately, on that particular day, I didn't get to spend any time with AP Melders because she was actively engaged in, in handling other issues that morning. But I want to share with you a couple of things that really, specifically one thing that just greatly impressed me. As, as Anne Marie was walking me around the school, and this comment has nothing to do with data or nothing to do with instruction, it has more to do with culture at your school, and specifically as it is reflected by your students. Almost every student recognized her, and many, many, many of the students were comfortable enough to actively engage her in conversation. And several, probably 30 or more, were comfortable enough to actually physically embrace her. And I just was so impressed with that, because I look back, I tried to avoid my principals, but, you know, apparently you are doing.
That's a weird story there.
Well, I spent a lot of time in the principal's office. But anyway, I commend you on that. I was so impressed by that. And, you know, I mean, I remember a few specific instances where you made on-the-spot corrections of things that I didn't even know were wrong, but, you know, you, you were on top of it. So thank you for that, and it was just wonderful to see how comfortable your students were.
Thank you.
So, you know, you're doing something very well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, Anne Marie, first year at Riverview. Katie, first year at Riverview. And Katie is also a product of our LEEDs program, that is, our internal leadership program. She went through that last year, and we've promoted her to an assistant principalship this year. I'm not sure if what we did totally prepared you for what you're going through this year, but that's our hopes. And Fran, first of all, let me congratulate you. My understanding is Trey's going to play football with Malik at Iowa State.
Yeah.
And so that, that's a big deal. Congratulations on that from a personal level. But I think, Fran, you, you, you said something that resonates. You've got to still make it fun. You've got to use the data. We have to be focused on that. We have to really hone down to what the kids need, but, but, and that, and that sometimes is a tough needle to thread, because data can be dry, it can be boring, it can be very mundane. And so how do, how do you take that and still use it to develop activities that, that are engaging and, and fun? And I, and I think that, you know, as we continue to use data, we are continuing to refine our instructional approaches that are fun, that are engaging, that, that do bring kids in. And so I, I compliment you on the use of that. I encourage you to continue those programs, just with any position. Think about it as an adult. How much better are you in year two of any position you're in as opposed to year one? And both of you are going to find that out.
I hope so.
You probably have, you probably have a list of things that you're going to do differently, but think about that from a programming standpoint, that year two, year three, year four, as long as we've got the right approach in place, you're going to see monumental steps on that. And so, you know, continue with that. I'm very encouraged with some of the mid-year data that you're getting, and we, we just need to continue moving forward. But thank you all three for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Mr. Holbrook, I wanted to make one comment, too, about Katie. She doesn't know this yet, but I'm actually going to invite her to our last lead meeting this year to invoke her knowledge on our leadership candidates this year, who could potentially be leaders next year, to share her experiences, so.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda, I believe we have the discussion that came up last meeting about building substitute teachers, and I believe that Mr. Frazier has shared some data with all of us. So Dr. Copus, since you were the one that, that kind of brought this to our attention, I'm going to yield to you for.
Okay, well, thank you, President Baker. I would tell you, my original intention was to make a motion that our board consider surveying our building principals to gauge their interest in bringing back the permanent building subs. However, after having a discussion with Mr. Frazier, I realized this may not be the most appropriate time, because it certainly doesn't seem like that would be in our financial, the best financial interest of our district. And Mr. Frazier will explain some of that to us, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Copus. So Dr. Copus called me this afternoon, and we had a, a talk about an email that I had sent out to the board. Dr. Copus had requested some information about what it would cost the district to hire permanent building subs, as well as what are our expenditures for mod pay for the last year and what we're expecting for this year. And so mod pay and sub coverage is something that I keep a pretty close eye on, and so I had those reports at the ready. I monitor those on a monthly basis. And just to put some numbers together, mod pay and sub cost, cost the district last year about $725,000. And we are on pace this year to be at that number as we sit here about halfway through the year. So what, what does that mean for us with building subs? So if we were to hire building subs, that would be 12 folks. I would assume those folks would take insurance. There is a, quite a difference between selecting the single plan versus the family plan, but bottom line, hiring 12 folks would cost the district somewhere between $420,000 and $587,000, depending on the health insurance plan that they took. So we, we talked about that this afternoon. We also talked about breaking that down by day, which I think makes a lot of sense just in, in my simple mind. So if, if we hire building subs, depending on plan, again, that's going to be somewhere between $190 and $265 a day, whereas if we call for a sub, it's 125 bucks a day. And if we're talking mod coverage, most of our mod coverage for an all-day mod is about $150. It's a little more expensive at the high school, but again, it doesn't touch the 190 or the 265 that it would cost us every single day for a building sub. So did I accurately describe that?
Absolutely, and that's exactly what we discussed this afternoon. And while I am a supporter of permanent building subs, I'm not a supporter of spending funds that we don't need to spend, so I certainly will not make that motion, and, and I thank Treasurer, I thank Jeremy for the information and explaining that. I think it's important that people know that, and when you just look at the numbers, that's not a wise thing to do at this point.
I agree, and I think, I think after I looked at those, if I thought that it would solve, completely solve the problem, that would be one thing, but we still have more out, so it would not, I would agree with you, Dr. Copus, it doesn't make good fiscal sense to.
The other thing that I wanted, I wanted to make sure that with, with the data that was brought forth and, and kind of looking in and investigating some of this, when you look at the numbers that Jeremy was just discussing, if we were to hire 12 individuals, that would leave us with 30-some additional placements that we would have to find either through mod coverage or through, you know, hiring substitutes through the, through the ESC as well. One of the things that I do want to bring up for your consideration is actually, as I was collecting some of this data, I spoke to some HR directors in other districts who do have building subs, and I also kind of picked their brains a little bit about how it's worked for them and, and some of the, some of the suggestions that they might have. So I actually have to give Mr. Malone some credit up at Talawanda. He brought up a suggestion that I think we should potentially consider. Right now, we currently do not allow non-bachelor substitutes in our district. There's a number of different reasons for that. Non-bachelor substitutes could be anywhere from 18 years old on up, they could not have varying degrees, they could, you know, basically be high school graduates or GEDs. One of the things that we've actually had some individuals reach out to us this year on, and Mike actually mentioned that this has helped them considerably at Talawanda with some of their substitute problems, is taking Miami University students or local college students at any university who are pursuing education degrees or education-type degrees, allowing them to be considered for non-bachelor substitutes within the district, and then that could potentially fill some of those gaps. I did have an opportunity to meet with Ms. Backaby last week. We were in a, in a labor management meeting, and I, you know, kind of floated that idea out to her and, and, you know, asked for her thoughts and her support from, from the union's perspective as well, because I know that there are some concerns with non-bachelor substitutes if you're bringing an 18-year-old in to, let's say, a high school situation. But I think if we really kind of identify those students who are in college pursuing degrees in education or, you know, nursing or social work or, you know, counseling, those types of individuals, I think we could potentially take our numbers and, and possibly help those out in the future. So I think that's something that I would ask that you as, as a board consider, because right now, we do not allow that. And I would, I would be willing to be the gatekeeper of that individual, making sure that they met with me before we would actually recommend them to the ESC to become a non-bachelor substitute in the district.
Would that just be a policy change then, that we would have to implement?
Yeah, it, it would, because right now, the way that the law reads is that you, the board has to act on it if you do not, if you want to use someone that does not have a bachelor's degree. I, I think there's another piece to this as well, is the fact that, you know, it gives us an opportunity to see these kids in front of a classroom and potentially use it as a hiring mechanism, especially if this, these students are juniors or seniors and finishing up their, their education degree, and it could be a way to, to look at it in those terms as well. So there, there could be a small, you know, the, the, the small-term benefit is the covering, we're getting some coverage for the class. There's a bigger benefit in that as well, and so sometimes we, we interview a lot of candidates. Very infrequently do we actually get to see Very infrequently do we actually get to see them in a classroom engaging with students on, on a basis before we hire them, and that, that would, that would be another advantage.
One thing that I, I think would be important, junior or senior, you don't want a freshman in there who's just out of high school.
No.
Is not the maturity, even though they're in, you know, in, you know, in education at Miami or wherever, you're still not mature enough. So I would be comfortable if it was junior or senior with.
I, I would like them to be personally, I would like them to be in their last four semesters prior to graduation.
Well, and the other thing I was thinking is, is with that, with that age difference, maybe considering them more for the elementary levels than for the secondary levels, because having only about three-year gap between age, you know, the ages seems a pretty close thing. I remember student teaching, and I was, I mean, it's right, it's the same age.
And I'll be honest with you, this, this, this has come out, this has come up a couple of times this year, because there are some other districts that do allow the non-bachelor subs, and we've had to basically deny them. But I think there are some, some individuals who have actually done field experiences through the university in our district. They, they liked the, the experience that they've had, so that's when they have reached out, whether I've been, whether I've been at recruiting fairs or whether I've been, you know, in, in a situation where they would come up and say, "Hey, you know, I'm going to have classes only Monday, Wednesday, and Friday next semester. I'd love to substitute on Tuesdays and Thursdays." I think those are the individuals that we target and try to make sure that we, again, there has to be a process where we're going to basically vet them before we would allow this to happen.
I'd like to see the parameters of that.
So, yeah, I would say that if you, Mr. Wright, you're going to take the, the lead on that, and then that sounds like that the policy would have to be very specific with the parameters.
Well, I, I think the administrative guidelines is really what needs to be specific as far as, you know, the policy would just.
Right.
Permit us to allow individuals without a bachelor's degree to sub. Exactly what those administrative guidelines and how we go about doing that is where the specificity, I think, needs to be.
However, you need to do it. That's what we pay you guys for.
I would kind of want that in what we vote.
You would want it in the what?
Oh, we, we need to, we need to provide that to you in front of you prior to that, absolutely.
Right, right, right. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. I need, we have some items of, that we need to discuss on our executive agenda, so I need a motion to go into executive.
A move.
Meeting. Second. Frazier?
Dr. Copus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Okay.